Thank you. I'd like to call to order the City Council's special meeting of September 11th, 2025 at exactly 5:30 PM. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Werner.
Here.
Councilman Gleason.
Present.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Merlingowski.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. I'm going to take a moment, personal privilege here, and call in honor of all those fallen on 9/11. I'm going to call for a moment of silence and for the recent tragedies that our nation has endured. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call. Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Gleason.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Public comment. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment, and public comment cards should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium, and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments may receive a response and may receive a response later from staff. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment cards?
We have no public comment cards, Mayor.
Is there anybody here who'd like to make a public comment? Mr. Farber.
I could. It's okay.
You're welcome.
He's got a mission.
Okay. Special agenda. We have before us a discussion about the determination of a city manager selection. Let's open up for council discussion. Let's discuss.
Mr. Mayor, before you start, let you know that we do have Mr. Blackburn here from the FCCMA Senior Advisors, and in your pack is a brochure that you could have read on processes that they offer.
May I ask you to come up and give us a little spiel on how the process works and what your wonderful organization possibly has to offer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Glad to be here. This is my first time to Westlake, and it's kind of interesting being from Port St. Lucie, which is a similar founding, with similar origin community, a little bit larger scale right now, but you never know. But your pace of growth is very fast, which creates its own set of challenges. So I'm very happy to be here and thank you, City Manager Council. As Ken mentioned, I am Russell Blackburn. I was previously the City Manager of Port St. Lucie. I have worked as a City Manager in Gainesville, Martin County Administrator in Virginia, 45 years of local government experience. And you would think that after 45 years of working in local government, you'd say enough of that and I want to do something else. But I volunteered, along with the seven of us, in addition to me, to be a Senior Advisor through the International City County Management Association, Florida City County Management Association, to advise and counsel other managers who are still actively working. And one of the things we do, in addition to working with direct members, is we help local governments that are under 10,000 for cities, under 50,000 for counties, in their selection processes for new city and county managers. So there's a selfish reason for that. We believe in the principles of good government, a high standard of ethics as retired city managers, and certainly current city managers and county managers. And so what we do as Senior Advisors is we try to help local governments make decisions that will yield them through a good process, city managers that they can believe in and will deliver ethical-based decisions and good quality services. So with that said, there are three methodologies generally that you can use to recruit and ultimately select a city manager. Certainly, if you've been around, you've been to some of the conferences for the League of Cities, you know there are professional recruitment firms that for a fee will help you with your recruitment, and they're very good, and they do a few things that we as city managers through the Senior Advisor program don't do. But they do have a price. Their services run between $30,000 and $50,000 per recruitment. And I would say it's worth every penny of it to get a really good city manager. So you also can do your own recruitment. It's a little harder when you're a contract city because you don't have a lot of staff that are generalist other than your manager. You know, and so, but that is certainly an option that many cities choose. If you have your own Human Resources Director, your own process, you know, you can run that a little bit easier. And then the third option is to ask the Senior Advisors for help. We do not go into a city or county if we're not requested to be there, generally by a motion from the council. We would come in and help you with the process, help guide you on some of the things that are really important to ensure that you get a good quality manager, and we'll help you through that process every step. Generally, we would recommend that you designate somebody on your staff for the administrative assistance. So somebody's got to put the ads in the various periodicals and associations to let people know that your position is open. I would say that should be the city, not the Senior Advisors, just because it's your ad. And we help you with weeding through the myriad of folks who will want to be in your community and try to pick out the groupings of the folks who best meet your qualifications and your desire, those that maybe might lack a little something, but they're pretty close, and then finally a grouping that for the people who don't really meet your qualifications at all. Now, that doesn't sound like a lot, but I just finished the recruitment about a month ago, and it was three full days of looking at resumes, reviewing them, Googling a few people, making sure that we made good recommendations to the council. We also do not do, and this is something that a professional recruiter would do, we do not do background checks. And it's an interesting thing about that is we have a lot of members of FCCMA or ICMA that will apply for your position. So we don't want to be in the position of saying you shouldn't choose that person, knowing that they're all equally members of our professional association. But we do recommend strongly that you do background checks.
Absolutely.
And that is a service that the council can purchase fairly inexpensively. And I would recommend you do background checks prior to your actual interviews. So we've looked at, you know, kind of what's the process that you start with? And certainly, the most important thing that you can do is together sit and think about the characteristics of the next city manager. What do you want? What will help to bring you forward as a city? And that is, you know, that's the start. You know, after that, certainly, the council would approve a job description. That job description will be advertised. The Senior Advisor, since we're Florida-based, certainly knows, the League of Cities members knows, the Association of Counties, is in the International City County Management Association. And so likely to get somebody who are the local government. Certainly, there may be people from outside we would not exclude. And we'll, if you select and ask for our help, you know, we'll screen those for you, give you that grouping, those grouping of candidates, give you ideas of how to go forward with the actual interview process. We do have, and I provided to you, the selection guide that was written by the Senior Advisors for the League of Cities and at Florida City County Management Association. It's a very thorough guideline of it, step by step, the things that need to be done to ultimately select a city manager or a county administrator. So we'll follow that guideline for the most part. If you look and read that, you know, it really gives you a good step by step. It also includes a lot of resources, things that will be needed at some point down the stream in the process. You know, you'll need a contract for your manager. Get some sample contracts in there. If you should choose to use an executive recruiter, there are contacts for all the executive recruiters that typically work within Florida. And I would say very clearly, we are happy if you choose to use an executive recruiter. They'll do as good a job as we would do, and maybe a little bit better because of their active searches. But we do offer our services, and, you know, if you'd like to know more, I'm here, Ken, to answer your question.
Yeah, absolutely. You said there was a couple of things that a recruitment firm does that you guys don't do. What are those couple of things?
So, so two things, and I just mentioned it. Because they're doing active recruitments, many of the firms will have 10 searches going on at a time. They know the pools of folks who are applying. Now, we kind of know that, but not nearly as good as they would know. So that means the applicants have to reach out to us, which is okay, because that means they want a job, if they'll reach out. And then we do not do background checks. And a good recruitment, executive recruitment firm will provide a dossier, if you think about it, on each candidate of the semifinalist, your top 10 group. We don't do that. It's very time consuming.
You can recommend a firm for us to use to do the background check?
If we can recommend firms for a background check, which is a little more detailed than a dossier, which would just provide general information and conversations. But what I've seen in the most recent recruitment I was involved in, the background checks were not that expensive and were really pretty, pretty fast.
Now, soup to nuts, from retaining your services to actually, you know, going through contract negotiations and hiring a city manager, about how much of a timeframe do you suspect we'd be looking at?
So it's when the clock starts is an important thing. So I mentioned to you that the first step I would recommend is that you, as a body, have a workshop, sit and talk about what do you want of your, out of your next city manager? What are the issues that are going to affect? Ken has been here since 16, Ken, so almost nine years.
Ten.
What do you expect over the next nine years? How's the city going to change? Do we need the same skill set, a different skill set? You know, what will help bring your city along in its best form? And so that's the starting point. The rest of it's easy. You know, there's some mechanics, you know. Ken probably has a job description already, but if not, there are similar ones that, you know, for cities of, you know, 10,000 people or less. And we can get those job descriptions. Those will be placed as noted. The total timeline for the process, once you tell us what are the characteristics that you want. So if it takes you a month to get there, then that starts the clock. Around 90 days before you can be in a selection process. Now, from 90 days, then most managers who are actively working will have between a 30 and a 60-day timeline where they have to give notice to their current employer. That's possible.
Three to six months.
Yeah, February is my thought, what I came up with earlier, around February. They should be online and working for you.
Very good. Do any of my colleagues on the council have some questions?
I have a brief question.
Sure.
Do you solicit city managers, or do you wait for city managers to reach out to you?
It's a great question. Thanks, Dan. We have a list of folks that are in transition, who may have, for whatever reason, they quit, they got fired somewhere else. We maintain that list. We'll send a blast out with the description of the job and the timeline to all of those people. We will make the League of Cities, and we'll send your job description and your position announcement to the League of Cities, the Florida City County Management Association. We have a newsletter that goes to our 700 members. We'll send the same announcement out to the International City County Management Association, and had some success in just a generalist group called Florida Jobs. We may recommend putting it in that group as well. So we're not necessarily knocking on the door and saying, "You apply for this." But certainly, recent recruitments where there were good candidates, we'll make sure they get the announcement as well. We are a member organization, so we don't discriminate against members. We try to embrace all of our members by letting them know that you have a vacancy. That's, this is a great city. Don't know why you wouldn't be here, wouldn't want to be here. But we let them know your position is open, your timeline, and what you're looking for.
I have a question for council. Since by charter, this position is a contract, whether it be an individual or a firm, would these services satisfy the RFP or RFQ requirements? Technically, it's a contract?
Oh, yeah. They're not serving as a manager.
No, no, no. I'm not talking about his position. I'm talking about the manager's position.
Oh.
Would
No, you would
Having him do the robust search for us, is that the same as putting out an RFP or RFQ?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. Mr. Werner?
You did indicate we need a city manager description. We have a unique arrangement with a company that provides, or several companies, that we're a contract city.
Correct.
And I know it's not a new way of doing city business. It's been around a long time. But have you found that city managers from contract cities are more likely to request to be part of the process?
There aren't that many local government-like groups, you know, that are all contract. So I can't tell you that there's a trend line at all.
Okay.
I do believe that, you know, when you, most managers know that the hardest part of being a manager is dealing with personnel. So there's some real advantages to having contracts for major services. There are a few cities that I'm aware of that are similar to Westlake that I would certainly want to notify folks there. But, you know, we kind of rely on people who are in the market. You know, if they're looking for a position, I do not believe they would be, would not apply. I think it is really an advantage to being a contract city. You know, just that you, one, is a newer city. Your problems are different. You know, a lot of infrastructure issues are going to confront you versus an older city that has a lot of people issues. And that makes it intriguing.
So on the recruitment that you indicated, you finished about a month ago, what city was that for again?
Felsmere, small city in Indian River County.
Here. So on that particular recruitment, how many applications did your screening crew go through? And did it get whittled down to a more manageable number that was presented?
Yeah, that was a very interesting process. One is that it had started prior to the Senior Advisors getting too involved in it. And they'd already advertised, drafted their job description, and sent it out. They chose to advertise on Indeed, which, if you put a code word in for manager on Indeed, there's a lot of people have been managers, but they were managing for the 7-Eleven. They were managing for small retail or any number of things. So we got 120 applications. That's why it took so long to review them all. Maybe 30 were really qualified and not as many highly qualified. So that one actually required two notices because the interim originally said he didn't plan on applying for the job. And the council grew to like him. And at the very end, after he'd been selected with the top 10, he changed his mind for some personal reasons and dropped out. But by then, the water was poisoned. A lot of people who might, would have applied, didn't because they thought the job was kind of tied up. So we advertised it again. We didn't put it on Indeed. We had about 30 applicants, and 20 of them were very qualified.
So when you published the opening, where did the applicants file their application? Is it with you or is it with
No, they're your applications, and they will be public records. So, you know, it's true. Your city attorney will know that they come to you, they'll come to your clerk, I would suggest. She will take those applications and require them, record them, find them, provide them to me. And if there's another Senior Advisor that helps in the screening process, we'll review them. They will be public records as you get them. I don't recommend that you feel a need to review them because we're ultimately going to screen through them all and give you the groupings that I mentioned. And so you don't have to screen them. That's what we would do. That's definitely something we do.
And
But they'll all be a repository with your clerk.
So for those applicants that are screened out, so would it be the city clerk's office that would let them know by letter?
That would be my suggestion.
To help her?
Yes.
Okay. And for those that are called in for interview, they would be, they would do the same thing?
Yes. After the initial screening, I'll call it a semifinalist group, you know, council usually will narrow those three groupings down to probably 10 candidates and then choose based on your background checks, who do you want to interview? I would recommend five to six, maybe even seven, with a couple of those being alternates in case somebody drops out, which is likely. And so the council would manage the process, but we'll guide you through it.
Okay. And I believe we do not have a city manager job description at this point.
There are They're playing around.
We would need to develop one.
Yeah.
You're suggesting that the council come together in a workshop and spend some time going back and forth, what we're all looking for, what the council as a whole would then agree to. And maybe we can get the current city manager to maybe identify where he believes some of the issues are in the next 10 years as well. So that would seem to be the right process to move forward with. Thank you.
Councilman Gleason?
When it comes to reviewing, I know you said that you guys don't do "background checks," quote unquote. Do you do professional reference checks?
We do not.
Okay. Because I know the background checks usually do not come with the professional reference checks.
But you can request that as part of your background check.
Okay.
Review, so. And again, because we're a member organization, we don't want to be in a position of judging between members. You know, actually, this is, it's a good thing and a bad thing. That's why I say there are pros and cons to each of the methodologies.
Councilman Leonard?
So because our city is so different in terms of how we're set up, all of our employees are contracted, including our city manager. Our current city manager comes through an agency or an organization. We're looking to move away from that. So if you can help me understand, or what are the challenges for an individual that is not connected to a company? What would be the pros and cons, I guess, for the 401K, your health benefits? Because I think we're moving out of something that's been very comfortable for our city. All of those things were included as part of his employment through another company. So we contracted his services, but someone else provided those benefits. So I guess just to help me understand, as we contract with an individual now, how does that work and what are the pros and cons? And do we have a lot of people willing to get their own health insurance, fund their own 401K? I'm just trying to look at the bigger picture because we can define what we're looking for, but there's, I think, a lot of other benefits that people get through companies working for cities that they will not get working for us. So if you can help me with that.
So my understanding is, in the shift, this would be your first employee?
Well, the charter prohibits an employee that are a contract.
They'll be a contract.
You're selecting them. They will be a contract. Yeah, thank you. It's not really any different than most managers. They have a contract, an employment agreement. It will identify what are their leave benefits, how will their health insurance be provided, and you decide that. So if you're giving them a assignment, and they should go provide it. If you're giving them a 401K contribution, so, and some of that is negotiable. You may find some managers already are retired from one local government, and they may not need, you know, retirement. But they do need health insurance. So it's going to be specific to each manager, and it is something that you can negotiate in that contract, that employment agreement.
Are there many cities like ours that you've worked with before that have this challenge or different structure?
I have not, but I don't see it as a hurdle personally.
Okay.
I think the issue is, the difference is you, you, the council, are selecting your manager. So that manager is not provided by a private sector entity or company. You're making the selection. You'll have an employment agreement with that individual, a contract. It's a little bit different that you haven't been having to worry about, where's the health insurance come from? What is the 401K and who administers it? But those are all issues that are in an employment agreement and can be in an employment agreement.
Thank you.
It's a great question. Thank you.
Do you have a recommendation on how the council would go about interviewing? In other words, would it be on a full council basis in a personnel session? Or would you suggest individual council members interviewing candidates?
So
How would you, what would you think is the best way to go about that?
So I recommend one-on-one meetings with the candidate and each individual council member. Usually, those last about an hour. You know, your attorney may want to tell you some things you can't ask, you know, to keep you on the straight and narrow. But you can ask then some things that maybe they're unique to a candidate. You really like a candidate, but you saw they left a job. Why did you leave it? You know, you're curious about that. So those one-on-ones are a good fit for that kind of question. Then the council as a whole, in public session, would interview each candidate. And I would recommend six or seven, or I'd recommend five, but with two alternates, because somebody is likely to drop out. And so having alternates that you've pre-chosen allows you to just move somebody up if needed. But that would be a public session. You'll have questions you should ask, basically, all of them the same question. So that way, you're not So that way you're, you're not putting some, somebody thinks a ringer question in to, that's really difficult for one candidate and not asking the same questions to the others. Uh, but it's in public session. Uh, your one-on-ones would be in a room with you and the candidate, but then they would come together with all of you in session, recorded just like your regular council meeting, but on, but for one purpose. And that's uh, depending, you know, the more candidates you choose, the longer that meeting lasts. So some folks have a hard time making a decision, they say, well, let's just interview them all. That's going to cost you a lot of time.
We are out of time. I truly appreciate your uh wonderful presentation.
Yeah.
And uh, do we make a motion? Let's, or is this just discussion? What are we doing now?
Just discussion. I think it'd go on the next agenda.
Okay, let's move quickly to the next agenda item.
Excuse me, no. So your selection, how you want to proceed, go on next agenda.
Got it.
So how do you want it, consensus or a motion or what?
Well, consensus would be, yes.
Okay, I would concede, I guess that's what I'd work.
I, I, I certainly think uh it's worth saving the fifty thousand dollars. Um, and it seems like you will provide a very robust service. So you know, I, I was on the executive committee that just hired for Richard Radcliffe's job.
Oh.
We, we had two hundred and fifty applications, um, twenty-five. We narrowed it down to twenty-five people. Uh, we brought three names to the board with two alternates, they added three more just based on applications. Um, and in the end, we hired somebody who was in the three, the three names. And now we're about to enter contract negotiations with them. So I'm not unfamiliar with the process. Um, I think it would be wonderful to retain this wonderful free service that you will offer us. You uh, if the council agrees, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, what better way than having other managers pick us, uh, great one for us?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would ask that you make a motion at your next meeting when it's on the agenda.
Absolutely.
Uh, and that, and transmit that to the senior advisors. We have it on record that we've been asked to help.
Thank you so much. And if you have a card, if you could leave one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Leave one for all of us.
So we, we will reach out to you prior to the next meeting.
Okay, yes. Thank you so kindly. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Uh, we have a force discussion of approval of the first amended agreement with Infomarc. Uh, Mr. City Manager, would you like to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, briefly, uh, this is modifying the contract, removing uh my name from the original contract as well as uh naming Zoe as the acting manager uh for the time being until further modifications are made.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns with the contract?
No.
Amendment. Uh, there's no discussion, I need a motion?
Move approval of the proposed agreement with Infomarc from amendment number one.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilman Gleason. Roll call. Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Warner?
Yes. I've said yes before.
Motion carries five zero.
Uh, consider, considering we're behind, I'm gonna waive council comments. I hope my colleagues are okay with that?
Yes, sir.
On this item, all right? Uh, Mr. City Attorney, you got anything for us?
No, sir.
Fair?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize, I was told that I did not call Councilwoman Leonard's name, let me do the roll call vote again.
Please do.
Councilman Gleason?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard? Vice Mayor Langowski?
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Warner?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent, thank you. Um, city manager report for the special meeting?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, public comments. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. Public comment card should have been completed, return to city clerk when you're called, please state your name and address to the record. Do we have any public comments on the special meeting?
No public comment cards, mayor.
Okay, I will adjourn at six oh four PM and move right into the budget hearing.
Mayor, if you'd just give us a moment?
Sure.